We're all good. Caitlin, we're all good.
Turkey, turkey.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, now I'm sitting over here.
I forgot the volume was up.
You want to turn it up so you can hear?
No.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our meeting this afternoon, budget adoption meeting for April the 19th, 2023. Let's stand with the pledge and a moment of silence. I think we have some special guests in the back row of the students. Raise your hand. All right. We always want to recognize our students from the high school. If you have any questions, you can approach any of these supervisors with your questions at the end or at any time. Thank you for being here. Okay, we need to adopt our agenda for this evening.
In. So move it.
Okay, you have a second.
Second.
All right. We had a motion by Mr. Sheridan and a second by Mrs.
Mr. O'Brien.
Oh, Brian.
I'm sorry.
Second by Mr. Wait, she said.
I made a motion.
You made. Okay. All right, I'll get it together. We had the motion by Mr. O'Brien and the second by Mrs. Bigger, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Then the chair votes that. So our agenda is adopted, county administrators report.
Yep, Madam Chair, members of board, a few things to report this evening. Get this out of the way here. So one new employee, Daniel Maury, started for in the Parks and Rec Department, starting for the park maintenance worker. He started with the county on April 10th. Glad to have him on board. He's got lots of good experience and so I know Mr. Spitzer will be looking forward to and is already looking forward to him helping him out with it being prime time for the park season. So again, Fluviana Social Services, they're at the celebrating children's fair, open to children, parents, caregivers. Again, Carriers Brook Elementary, Saturday, April 29, 10:00 a.m. to noon. And it's hosted by Fluviana Social Services. Again, there'll be free and fun activities, giveaways, snacks, bounce outs, bounce house, face painting, balloon art, and local resources. So like I said, it's 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 there for 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 all to come, young and old. We're having a drive through Rabies Clinic again at Pleasant Grove. I'm sorry, it's at Fluviana High School. It's going to be April 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So at 9:00 a.m. to noon, the cost is $10 cash only. So again, if you, when you come, please remain in your vehicle. Remember to have pets, dogs, leeches, cats and carriers. Vaccines are good for one year and three-year vaccinations will also be available. There's a little QR code on here if anyone wants to to sign up in advance. And again, they would like a pre-registration form filled out prior to the clinic. And you can go to fspc.org or scan the QR code. So as we talked about at the last meeting, Parks and Rec had their annual Easter egg hunt, which was Saturday, April 8th at 10:00 a.m. promptly. The egg hunt lasted approximately 12 minutes with over 200 youth hunting eggs. So they had four zones with a total of 7,000 eggs spread out with one golden egg in each zone. So infants, infants, the three-year-old had 2,000 eggs, four- to six-year-old had 2,000 eggs, seven to nine had 2,000, and 10 to 12 had 1,000 eggs. So.
Who had the golden egg, do you know?
I do know, Mr. Spitzer.
Oh, right. Okay. Yeah, okay.
So again, another great event at Pleasant Grove Park. Again, it takes many, many weeks and probably months of planning and it's over in 12 minutes. So special thank you to the high school SVA and FUMA interact clubs. They assisted with the various aspects of the event. So thanks again to to all those who participated.
Mr. Doll.
Yes.
These plastic eggs or chicken eggs?
No, plastic eggs.
Oh, my goodness. Mailbox.
A lot of balling.
Yeah, plastic eggs with with candy and all the eggs.
Okay.
Yep. So spotlight on business, we had a couple of recent ribbon cuttings, unique designs. Jody Jones is the owner. She opened up the store, opened up the store in on Main Street in Palmyra here. And then also Town and Country Storage with which is on South Boston Road. Tom Crowder is the owner, had the ribbon cutting for there this past Saturday as well. So I want to thank and welcome the new businesses to Fluviana County community. And spotlight on business as well. Again, the Small Business Development Center has office hours, Fluviana County Office Hours in the county. It's going to be April 27th from 1:00 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. And there'll be me, meeting in the Fluviana Chamber Building, which is on Main Street in Palmyra. Again, meet with a business advisor to discuss business concept, operations, challenges, funding opportunities, and marketing strategies. And last but not least is some of your upcoming meetings. And I guess we will determine if we need April 26 after this evening's meeting.
At the end of this.
At the end of this meeting. That's right, 2BD. But again, upcoming meetings that we know are guaranteed, May 13th at 5:00 p.m. You have a regular meeting in here and then May 17th at 7:00 p.m. You have a regular meeting in here. I'd be happy to answer any questions to the board members.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Doll? Okay, I hear none. So we will now open our first public comments. You have five minutes. Would you come to the lectern and give your name and address? And speak to the board? Do we have anyone who would like to come forward? Ms. Johnson?
Evening, I'm Perry Johnson. I live at 229 Pine Lane in Fork Union. My last comment on the budget is much like my first. I really want to thank you all for looking to more competitively compensate the the county employees last year. I'm proud to live in a place that pays good money to good people to do a good job. You really did inspire me to take this on for the schools this year. And you've listened and I've so appreciated your help. And I just want to thank you for whatever you can do to make this happen for the schools also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else would like to speak? Come forward, sir.
Good evening, my name is Raj Singh. I live in Parklale, Palmyra, Virginia. I have one thing to say, thank you very much. I'm living in county 28 years. I never came here before. No problem with the taxes, no problem with the crime, nothing. This is the best place to live. Thank you, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think.
Amen. Tell the rest of the family, say hello, please, sir.
Um, okay, anyone else? Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James Jonster. I live at 843 Jefferson Drive, Palmyra, Virginia. And last week I spoke in support of fully funding the school's request, point of view that I maintain. However, it would be remiss not to acknowledge that a different scenario has been advertised. As it stands, the county budget allows an additional 2.2 million for the schools. Increasing this amount to the requested amount of 2.7 would require we either make cuts elsewhere or use the fund balance. This is a position that could and should have been avoided, but now we are left with the challenge of how to move forward. It would be a mistake to consider any further cuts to the proposed school budget this year. Educational attainment in our county correlates directly to funding. Simply put, the more we spend on our schools, the better our students do. When a previous board slashed funding to our schools, the high school graduation rate was stagnant at around 85%. However, as the amount of funding has increased, so has that graduation rate to 94%. It would be an injustice to all those, both students and staff, who have strove to make Fluviana schools as successful as they are today, to ignore this trend. Inflation has affected this county as it has the wider country, and it puts a great strain on all of its residents. It is incredibly important not to overburden our residents with unnecessary expenditures. Education is not one of those unnecessary expenditures. The school board has identified needs that need to be filled in order to keep our children safe and in a position to prosper. These are not outrageous asks, but simply the necessary ones we need to keep our schools competitive within the surrounding area. The school board has been answering questions from you all throughout this entire process, and their ask has been adequately justified. Our schools are as vital a part of our county infrastructure as water and electricity. While a successful school is a direct concern for those of us with young children, those without can keep in mind that their success is mirrored in our rising property values. This expenditure should therefore be seen as an investment in the future financial security of our county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to the board? Please come forward.
Good evening.
You may have to move the bike mic down a bit, Ms. Brown.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair and Board, my name is Patsy Brown and I live at 22 Mulligan Drive, Palmyra. I spoke to you last week about suicide rates nationally and not wanting our Fluviana teenagers to be among those statistics. I come before you again to speak about the importance of fully funding the mental health programs for Fluviana County. Mostly those programs are in the guidance counselor and school psychologist positions for the high school. I'm retired now, but in my past, I was educated, trained, and worked as a counselor, among other jobs that I had during my career. So I do understand the importance of caseload as well as what a meaningful conversation can be to assist someone in need. I did a little research this week and learned that our high school counselors have a caseload that ranges from 260 to 312 fluco students per counselor. The professional standard is 250. Now think about a student who really needs a chat. Perhaps not just a chat, but a confidential conversation. So thinking about the caseloads of counselors in Fluviana, I did the math. Assuming there are 480 minutes in a day, and that's an eight-hour day. If the counselor caseload is on average nearly 290 students at Fluviana High School, that gives a counselor less than two minutes daily to allot to each student. I realize having only two minutes per student may be an unlikely scenario, but I hope it illustrates to you the need for more counselors so that there is ample time for them to interact and communicate to help our Fluviana teenagers. Besides listening and advising, counselors assess students' mental health. They advocate for special needs. They communicate with parents. They coordinate school resources and interface with community entities, offer the success of students. Counselors are the only people trained in the school to work with students who are in crisis and experience and experiencing suicidal thoughts. With our county's struggle to compete for counselors and the ones we have already having to focus time on outside responsibilities like managing 504 plans, they might miss opportunities to plan proactive programs and interventions to support students before they reach a crisis point. That is much to accomplish in a day with just two minutes per student. Again, I urge you to fully fund these positions and programs that promote positive mental health for our Fluviana teenagers. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience before I go to online? Anyone else?
Sorry. Good evening. My name is James Kelly. I live at 363 Manor Boulevard in Palmyra. That's in Rubber Oaks. And I'm here both as a private citizen, but also as a Palmyra representative and the chair of the school board for Fluviana County. So I know that you guys have heard over and over again from me and from the community, to be fair, about the school budget. But as we're kind of dwindling down here, we see the light of the tunnel and we're almost at the end of our budget season. And as I, you know, I have one of those those funny ages right now with the nine at the end. And it means that I start to think about where am I going to be when? You know, and we hear this question a lot when you're interviewing for a job or you're at an icebreaker for some kind of corporate thing. Where do you want to be in blank years? And fair enough, I got four-ish minutes left. So like, let's go through this. Where do I want to be in 20 years? And before my older friends here, I'm, I'll point at Tony, although they're certainly older among us. When I say 20 years, I don't mean to inspire existential crisis, but I do, I think about legacy and I think about community. And what do I want for me and for others in 20 years? So I'll quickly move through the selfish part because when somebody asked me that question, the first thing I think is, okay, I'm going to be almost 60. So I want to be above ground. Probably like to weigh a little bit less. I like my bank account to be a little bit fuller, like my mortgage to be paid off. Right, all of these big things. And I think, well, shoot, that's just, that's too much. Maybe I should just turn on the TV, put my feet up, pour a whiskey and call it a day. But that's not how big important things get done. We, they just don't happen to us overnight because we, you know, wish it, want it, do it, or what have you, right? They happen because we chunk. And by chunking, I mean, we take the big problem, we break it into small pieces, and then we accomplish them successively. So it means that, okay, I'm 39 and I got some work to do. So I go to my IRA and I increase the percentage. I go to the pub for dinner for after this meeting and instead of getting the burger, I want to get that salad. It means that I don't buy this thing and I instead invest in that car that's been around for forever. So after I'm done being selfish, I turn outward a little bit more and I think, okay, well, I want those same things for my family and friends. So it means making sure that I invest the time in my, in my spouse and in my siblings and answer the call even when I don't want to and get up and help a, help a buddy do something on their house in order to save them money. All of those good things that happen because you're a good, good friend and a good neighbor. And then I start to think about Fluviana, right? So I'm working my way out and I think in 20 years, what do I want for Fluviana? I want a healthy and prospering Fluviana. You know, I wasn't born here. That's, that's not a trade secret. Everybody knows this. I was born in Calver County, Maryland. It has very similar qualities to Fluviana. But I will spend the rest of my life here. I continuously tell my, my close friends and even family that when I'm done, sprinkle me out back. We got another quarter acre or some back there. Go and dust me around. I'll, I'll grow with the trees, right? And so that means that we got some work to do because the Fluviana today is not the Fluviana I envisioned for 20 years from now. It doesn't mean that we're a bad community. We're just a growing one. We're, we're one that is that is changing the time, but that's also not an accident. That's because you all have chunked and started to make investments in things that will make us better in 20 years. It means that, you know, we'll have a water system to attract business. It means that we'll have smart growth in areas that are designated for smart growth. It means that we'll have agricultural areas that are designated to remain agricultural. But all of these investments and all of this work that we do is for not, if we're not also investing in in the students in Fluviana, because functionally, the Fluviana that I see in 20 years is led by fluco graduates. The businesses that ultimately come here are either owned by Fluviana graduates or employed by and are frequented by Fluviana graduates. The Fluviana of 20 years for me is a place where Fluviana graduates have the skill set to go out and find a job and make a living wage and ultimately buy a house and become our neighbors and our colleagues and our friends. And that doesn't happen by accident either. And so we got to chunk this. So what does it mean for a student to be successful? Well, there are a couple of big predictors. One is the amount that we pay teachers and staff. Study after study after study show that well-paid teachers lead to better student outcomes, controlling for every other variable about a community. And it's not that underpaid teachers are lazy. I will wrap in 10 seconds. It is that when we pay them, they come, they stay, they invest in our community, and our students are the benefactors. Thank you so much and please fund our schools.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the board? Do we have anyone online? I don't see any. Do you see anyone?
I don't see anyone unmuting.
Ma'am, if you can hear me, I'd like to speak.
There we go, yep.
Okay. All right.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Christopher Kopp. I reside at 19 Ashton Road in Palmyra. And I would like to know who among the board members are not prepared to vote to fully fund the school's budget tonight? And for those who are not prepared to, how many days do you believe the citizens of Fluviana will tolerate your failure to ensure our county's children are provided for? So to be clear, all I need to know, or all I would like to know, and all I believe that I deserve to know is your full name, if you are not willing to vote to fully fund the schools, just your full name and the exact number of days you believe the citizens will tolerate this behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else online?
Can you hear me? I, I'd like to speak. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Hayden Parish and I live at 4514 Wurton Lake Road. I am fortunate to work at Fluviana County High School as a school counselor. I was hired last spring to begin my counseling career this school year, fulfilling a long-held dream of returning to the high school I graduated from to support the mental health and long-term goals of our students. I came back to work at the school because I see it as an institution that provides high-quality education to our community and is full of true potential. However, our potential is hindered without adequate funding. I can speak most accurately about mental health support in our school. Counselors strive to provide proactive support for students before they hit a crisis point. However, we are often acting in a reactive capacity. We are the employees entrusted to support students who are experiencing suicidal ideation in conducting risk assessments as well as collaborating with students to create a safety plan if they return to a period of crisis. When I was hired last year, there were two counseling positions opened. However, I was the only applicant that accepted the position. Our salaries are not competitive with other school districts in our area, and our student caseloads are far above the standard set by the American School Counseling Association. When we aren't able to adequately pay counselors, our students receive less counseling services. We have to balance competing crises, which has always been a task that was, that's entrusted to educators. But that balance is made much more difficult when we aren't funded in a way that allows our counseling services to be fully staffed. I'm so thankful that last year's budget included funding to hire a sixth counselor, which would allow our department to meet the professional standard of having around 250 students each. But unless these positions are paid competitively, they will not be filled. I am living my dream of coming back home and working in our school system, but we also need to employ staff that did not grow up here and will not move here unless they will receive an adequate salary. I appreciate each of you for everything that you have done and will do for our schools and our community. And please help us to get closer to fully funded and fully staffed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to the board in the audience or online?
I am not seeing anyone else online, Madam Chair.
Okay, we do have at the end of the meeting a second time where you can make comments. So you may, some people may want to wait until then. Then I will close the first public comments. And we do not have a public hearing this evening, so we'll go straight to Action Matters. A county attorney temporary higher, Mr. Doll.
Yep, so Madam Chair, as, as the board is fully aware and we've discussed, Mr. Payne is going to be officially retiring from his firm and from, from practice from the firm, basically at the end of the month. So in that time, you know, we still have not hired a full-time county attorney yet, in-house county attorney. We'll be discussing that a little bit later during the meeting. But in the meantime, Mr. Payne has, has agreed to stay on with the county for, for 60 days to work as the county attorney in a temporary kind of county attorney basis. Really, it's to attend board meetings, planning commission meetings, provide some, provide some assistance and in some prep pre and post meetings. And then again, you know, any type of legal, legal advice and things like that, you know, Mr. Payne would certainly make himself available. So we are proposing May 1, 2023 to June 30, 2023, at a rate of 3,000 per month. And again, you know, I kind of talked about kind of what that would be. So there's a couple of pieces. So that's, that's this one piece. So this would be effective May 1. In addition, with some of the changes, I gave you a letter also in front of you. Mr. Tanner, who is also with Mr. Payne's firm, is actually leaving the practice too at the end of the month. So he provided the board with his resignation letter as the deputy county attorney. And then kind of, I guess, kind of tied up with this too is Part B or Tab B, as well as continuing with deputy county and assistant county services, an agreement to provide services for the next one. But I'll, I'll kind of talk more about that one in the next motion. So, so the first action item is to hire Mr. Payne as a, as a temporary employee for 60 days, basically.
All right. So we have a motion on the screen.
And, and one thing to apologize, in the package, I was, I was quickly doing zeros when I put it on there.
Like three million.
I had the right decimal point, I had the right comma in there, but just.
You're paying three million, yeah.
Fred caught that when he checked it.
Okay.
No, actually, the, the finance director caught that.
Oh, yes, good for you.
Anyway, the motion is on the screen.
We need someone to make the motion in a second, please.
I move the board supervisors approve the temporary hire of Frederick W. Payne as an employee for Fluviana County Attorney Position, representing the county during the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission meetings and other meeting preparation as required, effective May 1, 2023 through June 30, 2023, at a monthly salary of $3,000.
Second, all right, do we have any more discussion after the second? If not. If not, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Chair both sides. So that's five to zero. Next one, um, B. Fluvana County Deputy and Assistant County Attorney Services Agreement.
Yep. So, so again, with Mr. Payne kind of leaving the practice, um, you know, currently we had Mr. Current, the current structure is Mr. Payne and his associates, um, you know, they all represent the county in, in, in different matters. Different types of, you know, real estate procurement, um, you know, uh, land use and things like that. So what's kind of changing with that since Mr. Payne is leaving the practice? And, um, Ms. Hoffman and Ms. Deloria and also, uh, Mr. Mr. Boggs, who is staying with the firm. This is to provide, um, Deputy and Assistant County Attorney Services in the interim until we fully, um, kind of outfit. The in-house county attorney department. The one thing that kind of really changed with this agreement versus the current agreement, the current agreement was set for a ten thousand dollar flat fee per month. Um, mainly for, I would say mainly for Fred's legal guidance and legal opinion. Um, and, and workload and then attending all sorts of meetings and things like that. What's changing with that is, is, is this new agreement is really going to be, it, it's just going to be an hourly agreement. So. So before it was ten thousand dollars plus per hourly charges for non-routine services. And I, and I can pull up the agreement if you want to see that. What changes now is the flat ten thousand dollars per month comes out. And. The rest of the firm that's there that still kind of does a lot of the things will just be providing services in the interim to the county on a monthly. On a monthly, uh, you know, kind of on an hourly charge basis. Um, so there are some changes in some of the rates from what the county, um, currently is paying for some of the. Uh, deputies and assistants, and those are on the screen, what is currently being paid versus what, uh, what is being requested. And again, the charges that, um, they provide to the county are twenty, it's a twenty percent discount off of their regular. Charges that they provide to any other clients. So again, I think, I think that's really it. Again, I, I can pull up the agreement if, if the board has any specific questions regarding this. And again, all of this is just kind of, uh, kind of part of, uh, part of the transition until we get a fully functioning, uh, full-time county attorney department.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Doll? Okay, we have a motion on the screen.
All righty. I move Board of Supervisors to approve the Fluvana County Deputy and Assistant County Attorney Services Agreement. For the Deputy and Assistant County Attorney Services and the continued appointment of Donna R. Deloria. And Christina M. Hoffman as Deputy County Attorneys and the continued appointment of Jeremy L. Boggs as Assistant County Attorney.
Second, all right, the motion was by Mr. Sheridan and second by Mrs. Eager. Do you have any other questions or concerns before we vote? If not, all in favor? Anyone oppose? Chair both sides, five to zero. Next, we have fiscal year twenty twenty-four operational budget and tax rates by Ms. Melton, Director of Finance.
And, and, and just one thing before Ms. Melton starts too. And, and so something that I just kind of wanted to just kind of preface with the board here, kind of depending on where the discussion with the budget goes. Remember, if the board wants to make any changes to the existing budget right now. What we will have to do at some point and what I would recommend because there are, there are. Parts of the action item, the resolution that contain numbers. So if there's any change in the numbers. In what is being proposed, whether CIP or budget-wise, what I may suggest is. Is we don't take. I guess maybe we come up with what the, what the action is. Um, what is agreed upon and I'll have to confirm with Fred on this here a little bit. What is the action? Because what finance, uh, Ms. Melton will have to do. Kind of in, in the midst, she's gonna have to go back and she's gonna have to crunch some numbers in, in, in. Update some items from the resolution documents for what the board actually is approving as well.
If, if the board is happy with, with the numbers, then all you have to do is have a simple motion to approve.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the budget is as it is.
You want to make changes, yeah. The thing to do would be to defer final action on the item. Until the staff can go and give you the numbers that, that need correct.
Right.
Yep. So I'll let Ms. Melton go through kind of both of her, kind of her one presentation for, for both items.
Good evening. So I just want to give you a brief overview of where we are currently with the budget. Next slide, please. So right now, our budget totals a hundred and four million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. We are at a current real estate tax rate of point eight four. We were at an equalized tax rate of point seventy-seven and a half. That results in a tax increase of eight point three eight percent for the average homeowner. A forty-five cent increase in personal property tax rates from three seventy to four fifteen. We had no change to our business and public utility personal property tax rates. They remain at two ninety. And no change to the machinery and tools tax rates. They remain at one ninety. Next slide, please. So our overall increases in the total county expenditures are five million. Which results in a five point one-two percent increase from the fiscal year twenty-three amended budget. We had a large decrease of four hundred and eighty-four thousand for our emergency management. But that is because we are transitioning from a contract crew to our own county department. And to highlight just a few of our large increases, one is our capital improvement by one point six million. Emergency services by one point six, again, because the transition from contract to our own county department. Schools from the amended show a hundred thousand, but if you look in the bullets. It's because a two point two million increase to the county contribution, but a two point one decrease from, um, state and federal. County operations is increasing by one point two, which stretches over multiple departments. Our enterprise funds to eighty-four K and our COLA and health insurance by eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Next slide, please. And this just gives the board a visual of new positions or upgrades that we are, um, proposing in this budget. And one, um, position not included in this budget.
And again, most positions we talked about, I mean, one, it's the County Attorney Department, a big piece of it is the EMS Department. And then there's a couple other, um, some other positions, um, that I propose and some other ones that the board discussed as well.
And next slide, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So depending on how the board wants to go with the budget discussion, I mean, I can certainly bring up the budget document. I don't know if there's. Again, I'll, I'll leave it up to Mad- Madam Chair, you tell me how, how the board wants to move forward with the budget discussion and, and we'll, we'll make it work.
Now with, with D, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty, that's the capital improvement plan. We have that. In front of us, but with, you're all, you want, I know you do. We need to discuss, um, the budget. That is before us, what we did last week, this one right here. Any discussion on this budget? And this is, uh, the capital improvement here. Do we have any discussion?
I, I will say this much, last week and we talked about take a nickel off or take a half penny off. The reason I said a nickel off of the personal property rate is everybody owns a car. Not everybody owns a house. I, I think we, I think we affect more people. If we do it on a personal property rate. I, I didn't explain that very well last week. That's why I said the personal property rate rather than. Uh, but I, I'm fine either way. I mean, we're not talking. A whole lot. Ms. Eager?
Um. I, I understand what you're saying because it does affect, uh, just about everyone. And I think that you've done, Mr. Doll, you've done a great job with the, with the budget. Thank you very much. And, um. I think that the government side of, of it, uh, is, is good. It seems that the school system's not too happy that they're not fully funded, but, uh, I think if we can do, um. Or the board should consider. Making them whole as the next year's budget, so that by next year they are up to where they would like to be.
Okay, you heard from Mrs. Eager. Anyone else? Do you have any comments on her comment?
I mean, anybody about what I was talking about.
Anyone?
I'm okay either way.
I mean, I'm okay either way. I think, like I said, the only reason I said the other is I think it affects more people. Because people that rent own a car.
I, I don't disagree. You know, we're so substantially increasing the real estate tax that. I can see to the public, you know, that's the one they notice the most. I, I tend to find. That, so any help there that helps keep that low, but you're, I mean, it's the same money either way. And I agree with you, personal property affects more people. Could, more people are contributing.
I'm, I'm sitting here doing numbers in my head. If we were to go to four-ten, that would be forty cents. So you're looking at nine percent. That would be pretty much nine percent and eighty-four, five would be eight point something, point eight something.
So you'd be adding up.
You'd be making those adjustments about even.
So.
And we're still not where we were, where we came down from last year with personal property.
Yeah. So if the board wants me to make changes, I can definitely make changes.
So you're saying instead of four fifteen, you're saying four-ten?
I was just, uh, uh, a nickel there or half a penny on the real estate. I don't think it's very much difference in either way.
Yeah.
It's ten thousand dollars, maybe. Oh, man. I just, I just thought that four-ten would help more people.
So you want, um, um, Eric to put that in?
You, you want, does the board, does a majority of the board want me to make that change?
I'm, I'm really fine either way.
Yeah, go ahead and make. Four-ten, so that would.
So now we've got a twenty-three thousand dollar surplus at this, at this moment.
I'm sorry, wait.
We need to take it away.
Yeah, we, so we lowered the personal property tax rate and we had to add a half penny back into.
Derek go eighty-four-four? I mean, that would almost be dead even.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if I'm, if we're creating a problem for the treasurer and the commissioner, but.
They hate those.
So now we're, now we're thirteen thousand short. Yeah, I mean, we could.
We can find that somewhere.
Anywhere.
Yeah.
Adjust one number.
And this is two point two for the schools, is that right?
Uh, it does have two point two million in here for the schools currently. Um, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any, any other discussion?
Ready to make a motion?
All right.
I was gonna say, I'll make it.
So, but to, to be clear. Where, where at, where with the schools?
Two, two.
I'd like to make that.
Under what they've asked for.
No, not two point two total.
Total.
Their ask was almost two point seven.
Yeah.
So it's five.
You, you all have to go readjust numbers.
Whole lot of big changes, so, um. So it's two six. Eighty-four, four and four-ten. And now, right now, they're at two point two millions.
If we didn't make those changes, we could.
Or that's what it's showing us.
What did you say?
If we had not made those changes with the nickel, which was about a hundred and sixty thousand.
Oh.
Well, I mean, we knew we had a hundred and eighty-three thousand, I think, is what we said.
All right, so.
But if we, we were getting them a little bit more, I think we added up last year, last week, it's a little bit more than. Half the additional money that they needed to, to do it.
We have. I don't, I don't, I think we have. Good reasons to believe that the, the legislature will probably.
You know.
Let's hope so.
We'll, and if not, then to Mrs. Eager's point, we can make up that differential next year.
If we need to.
If we need to. So that's, that's, that's.
Um, so what did you do with the thirteen?
I haven't done anything with it yet. So I mean, uh, so I, I either have to cut expenditure or I can.
Take it out of the BOS budget.
I can take it out of the BOS contingency.
Does that, that agreeable with everyone?
That agreeable with you all?
That's agreeable to, with the thirteen.
We almost never spend our.
We have the contingency leftover. We just pulled thirteen thousand.
Yeah, or I can.
One tenth of a percent on a.
Yeah.
Collection rate. Put your collection rate on. Go ninety-four, six. Instead of ninety-four, five. Pick one.
Yeah, it's, I mean.
On business personal, probably on business personal, if you went to ninety-four, six, make you. Close.
Now, last week we talked about, um, adding some things to the school. Is that, that's included, isn't it?
This is all the stuff that we added, left in last week, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the two point two million, two million, two hundred thousand, seven sixty-five, that's been in there for a bit. That's, that's all still within the budget.
Okay, so what did you do with the, we did, we've gotten rid of the thirteen?
Yeah, so all I did is I just decreased the BOS contingency by thirteen thousand, three eighty-five.
All right.
And you left in the money for the, um, janitors, custodians?
They get this as add where they help with it, but they, yes, ma'am, that.
They are. That's giving them everything, everything in. Well, yeah, as Mike said it. Yeah, they get decided where they.
They get to decide where they spend it. It is.
Yeah.
It is four hundred and.
Yeah.
I just want to say, I think the cleanliness of the schools is really important.
Yes.
And, uh, I could tell you a little story about that. It affected me forty years ago when we moved here. I had always gone to public school and my children had gone to public school in Brooklyn and in, uh, Bath County. And when I came here, I went to meet with the, uh, superintendent of the schools and it was summertime. And I thought that the school, I'd never seen a dirty school and this, our schools weren't clean. And I went home and said to my husband, I can't send the girls there. School isn't clean. And, uh, I mean, where I went to school and, and even in Brooklyn, a PS three twenty-one. Floors were so shiny, you could probably eat off of them. And this just wasn't the case with our schools. So my girls didn't go to, to, uh, Fluvana for that reason. I don't want other people to see our schools like that. So that's why I really want to be sure that when you make your decision. Make sure you take care of the custodians. Thank you.
Yeah, we need to look after our schools. We need to, you know, we have a.
On lunch duty. I get a little carried away when the children decide that. There's custodians here to clean it. I can make it be as big a mess as I want. I'll show up at their door.
Yeah, another, uh.
Hey buddy, uh, come with me.
And another time.
Those cameras are very nice.
Right.
I was on the planning commission and we were to go see the schools. It was the old high school. And they wanted a new, um, locker room. And so we walked through the locker room and I said to the superintendent. You do need a new locker room, but you need Clorox first.
Fairchild, I'll apologize because we were probably members of that. Very nice.
Right, yes. All right.
I, I, I want to recognize the school board for their hard work and their courage, um, in making what was a really significant ask. Um, and, and their dedication and, and trying to inform us as well as the school administration. I want to commend the board for, um, you know, getting as close to fully funding the schools as, as we could. You know, I think that, um, you know, that there, that there's, I did a little research prior to this in the sense of. Thinking that we were going to maybe have some more discussion about it, but. I'm struck by two, two things and, and, um, and I, and I'm surrounded by two teachers who have dedicated their lives to Fluvana schools. So, um, to me, this is meaningful in the same way that Mr. Kelly, Dr. Kelly. Spoke a little bit about, you know, what he saw for Fluvana twenty years from now. I just want to, just want to bring this up here. Um, and, and the correlation between higher salaries, um, and better outcomes in schools is pretty, pretty well-known. One study, a global study suggests that it is primarily not about the money that you give them, but about the ability to attract. At a higher scale, better, uh, uh, more educated, uh, people. And so if, if you want, you just don't give money to people, but you also try to attract and make sure that you're bringing in higher quality and recruit from that higher quality. So we were talking last week about. higher quality and recruit from that higher quality. So we were talking last week about recruitment efforts at school levels and and, and why are new people not coming into the teaching profession? Well, certainly, you know, if, if you're being underpaid, then you have to be somebody who's very dedicated to the community, such as Mr. Parrish, who spoke earlier, who came back to Flavanna to be a counselor, as have so many other teachers in the community. Um, and so I think that that's really important, but um, what, what I was struck with uh in this one other study was um with significantly higher teacher salary, schools will be able to retain and attract highly qualified teachers and help build a relatively stronger teaching workforce. Eventually, the long run of it, effect of higher base salaries on district performance may be larger than the short run effects, yes, the study estimates. And it goes on to basically say that it's in, in attracting and bringing those talented and experienced people, that they're able to provide that experience for the children and that that experience, especially when it comes to people that are coming from lesser uh income levels, um, who don't have the opportunity to have tutoring or to have higher educated parents, but, and, and or whose parents are just working too hard, the quality of the teachers matter so much. Um, and so it's not about the fact that, you know, teachers are overpaid. It's, 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 it's the fact that, you know, if we don't stay competitive, we're not gonna attract the best. And for Flavanna, we all want the best. So again, I commend the board and, and I, and I, I can't think of somebody, you know, who does more for the community than Mr. Sheridan here, who, who works multiple jobs, if you will, um, in part to do the best for his family and also his dedication as a school teacher. Ms. Johnson, I know, you know, Mrs. Booker here, uh, and so many more. So, you know, I, I just think this is great and I really appreciate the board uh, and the school board for, and the administration for doing this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. But I'd like to say this much. A lot of things have been said about quality and everything else. And when I talk about the recruitment efforts, I'm not talking about Flavanna County. I'm talking about the United States of America. If we don't start recruiting teachers to come to work and the country music song says it's a whole lot better than I ever could, when are teachers gonna start getting doctors and lawyers paid? No offense, Mr. Payne. But. You look at, you look at our boards and you talk about homegrown, three of us up here that are homegrown. There's, Ms. Johnson, I can't remember, did you go to Fluvan or did you come here?
No, my kids did.
You, I, I know your kids did because I taught them, but uh, but three of the four, three of the five members on the school board are homegrown. You know, our school system does a lot. And they've done a lot for a long time. There are currently in something that has not been mentioned, I don't think at all. How many accredited schools are there in the state, Ms. Johnson? I bet you know off the top of your head. Thirty-two?
I do not.
It was thirty-two last year. Dr. Kelly, I did, there's thirty-two last year, I believe, and we're one of those thirty-two school districts that is fully accredited.
Out of a hundred.
Out of a hundred, and then we've been that way for.
Ten years in a row.
Ten years in a row and um, you know, so. School, this, what we're doing, it broke. Can we make it better? Absolutely. Oh, you know, a lot of things get said about public education. You can't cut on the news. You don't hear somebody bad mouthing public education or somebody sitting back, it's never been a part of it, telling you they know how to do it better than you do. I, I've been doing it thirty-six years, Mr. Booker. You've done it for a long time, Ms. Johnson. We learn stuff new every day. We don't know it all. And but I can tell you right now, you better show up every day and make sure that those guys that are looking you in your eye know you care. If they know that you truly care, they will do whatever they have to.
Yeah, they'll hate math, but if they love to teach you, they'll get at math.
You know, and, and true. I mean, you know, I used, I had an English teacher, God love her, Mr. Fairchild probably had her. Ms. Duggan, sweetest lady in the world, and she talked. Ms. Duggan, if you're listening, I apologize. I'd fall asleep every day.
She's.
And I felt so stinking bad and she would let me sleep. She goes, I knew you had a tough ballgame last night, so I let you sleep. I'm sorry. And I mean, I would leave there feeling miserable.
I didn't have the grades to be in her class.
Well, I didn't either. I was just, I guess I was.
I can see her now, yeah.
Um, but yeah, you know, well, there's things that are going on that are amazing. The Wall Street Journal report, I don't even know where that came from, but we've been a gold star school for five or six years in a row. There, there've been good things going on. But I also remember that young man that came in here and sat in front of us, and I wish y'all all could have been here to listen. Talking about keeping them safe. And I tell the kids every year, that is our number one job as teachers, is not to educate you, is to keep you safe. And anyway, I've, I've been on my soapbox long enough. Did y'all get enough time to fix the numbers?
Yeah.
And, and, and you know, one thing about retention, which you brought up, is, you know, institutional knowledge, history. How many generations of children and families have, have you all participated in here?
Oh, my goodness.
To bind the community together.
I went to a funeral on Saturday. Unfortunately, we've been having too many of those.
Yeah.
But I saw a whole lot of people I watched when I was, watched play ball with my brother when I was growing up. You going to Wilmington and watching the Eagles play? That's one of the joys of my childhood life.
Right.
But I got to see brothers that I was on teams with. And young men that had blossomed into.
Right.
Extremely gifted citizens.
Right.
And that's.
You know, when you, yeah, when you talk about um teach, I remember.
It's not usually this bad, guys. Y'all had to listen to me five years ago.
I used to, people used to always say to me, most of our life, sure, I hope you don't let your daughter go into the teaching profession. She went into the teaching profession and she retired last year with thirty-six years, thirty-five years in kindergarten. And guess where she is today? She's on the Williamsburg Schoolboy. So.
And they're making some tough decisions.
Yes, they are. So.
Really tough.
So it's um, thank you all for your comments. Anyone else would like to speak?
Yeah, uh, so.
Sorry, I went so long.
No, it's okay. So I, I'm not gonna vote for this budget. And, you know, um, I said last time, when high school got built, it created such a polar swing and it hurt the schools and it still hurts them today. And, well, I just, I, I, I heard citizens say last week that they still aren't up to the level that they would be had they not lost that funding. So they did lose, it, it did hurt them. I mean, they came, the next board came in and took, I think, four point something million dollars out of their budget. So voters cover the gamut of all the different thoughts and beliefs. And the reality is, if you get too much, we are enough of a, a middle of the, of the ground society, especially when it comes to taxes. If you get too much, you will lose it. And, and you gotta respect your neighbor. Your neighbor is a caring person who has intellect and, and good thought into uh what he um, what he thinks he should do. And we ought to be able to disagree without somebody um threatening you, because listen, I've been threatened this year on both sides of it personally. Here's what we're gonna do if you vote for it. Here's what we're gonna do if you don't vote for it. So somebody's coming to get me.
You better watch her.
Yeah.
Chris, I wasn't serious about that really.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We gotta give him a bodyguard.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, the, the, the reality is, for the most part, we're volunteers, just like the school board and so on. And we do this because we care. We've been here almost every Wednesday since the beginning of January. And part of this, we're on other committees because we're on this board that we're assigned to, and we do those. Um, two of us in two county planners were at an event a good portion of the day today about soil and water and, and solar. And so the, the, the coach who has somebody yell at him foul stuff of uh, what, what they don't like about him when he's out there coaching nine-year-olds, it's the same people who say foul things during this. And it just doesn't hit my radar. Um, I'm here because I care. If, if we funded at one point eight, from what I've heard here, that's notably above the highest ask that this board's ever heard anybody or, or heard the schools ask for. And that would fund, again, we gotta come to, get to our math in which way, whichever way we do, because the, the school board will spend it however you want. But if you funded everything in the ask and gave uh a third of the ask towards the additional raises, it gets it to like one point eight, so you're still four hundred thousand shy of that, but you gave a third of the ask on that raise. And um, that's not chump change. And it's a year when we have all these other, we, we do have notable other increases we talked about last time. And um, so uh, and, and you know, and it occurs to me, I've never been at a board meeting, I've seen anybody come out and say, you better fund the, I'm sure it's happened, you better fund the entire sheriff's request. You better fund everything EMS asks for. The, the deputies put bulletproof vests on. They do a lot too. EMS runs into houses that are on fire. And so don't they re, don't they deserve always getting a full request? But we can't do that all the time. And so if we're at one point eight, that is a huge monumental step, unprecedented to the knowledge of anybody sitting on uh, at this table. And so um, I can be happy that I found a, a point where I tried to meet people on both sides. And as you said, Tony, last week, it's often not a five oh vote, and I'm, you know, you gotta be okay with that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I would add that maybe if that previous board ten years ago hadn't made that four million dollar cut, we wouldn't be asking for this money.
And again, chicken, chicken or the egg?
Chicken or the egg.
If, if you, if, if a school wasn't built that was beyond the budget that people thought it should be, would you have had the four hundred and some thousand taken away? And that's, that's, and I said it to this, I said it to them too, by the way, at the time. So I, I just, I thought it was too much on both sides of it. I knew it was gonna create a rift and in some major issues that this many years later, we're still talking about and feeling the pain from.
Until two thousand and thirty-five, we'll still talk about it.
Right. And, and I think, yeah, I wish we would, could put the high school to rest. We have the high school now.
If I win that hundred billion dollar jackpot.
That's right.
If I got that.
But, but, but I gotta say.
We need to, um, we have the high school. We, we've, we've, our kids doesn't have, we don't have to bus them to Shals. We have a career tech center. We need to add on to that. We get businesses in this community. Our students can go and be trained in the business. We have um nurses that, that um, we have a, a program to train, get, teach to be C N As. We have um, constipology, we have, and barber. We have um kids who get certified, can go right into a restaurant. Today, they've had all the training. There are so many um, wonderful things that that high school has provided, engineering. Um, and I, you know, I'm pretty, I've heard it so many times and I would, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you the story of what happened when the budget was cut. Um, but I have a story. Anybody, I was free there. I, and we have two good board members sitting here, Sheridan and O'Brien, y'all are good. I didn't mean it the way it came out, but.
I was in a baseball uniform.
Yeah, because of it. So you know what they say, some good comes out of everything. And they've been on the board since when? Twelve, twenty?
The next year.
The next year. Um.
So, but, but, so I, I have to say that, the, the, what happened as a result to the school's budget keeps coming up. You can't have one that keeps coming up without the other. So you, you can't discuss the, the accident in, in, in the, you can't discuss action or reaction and leave the other alone because that, that means nobody's learned anything from it. And, and those weren't, that wasn't just board members, that was citizens. Citizens voted people in, citizens elected people as a reaction to what happened with that school.
Yeah.
And those, and, well, no, no, they didn't elect them. They elected the ones that took four, what?
You don't, you aren't gifted this position.
Right. And that's my, but, but, but my point is, you can't, we can't keep talking about one half of it and not the other. If, if, if we're gonna keep talking about the amount of money.
We can.
Well.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, lessons have to be learned by both sides of it. And if it only comes from one side, you'll do it again.
I will bring up a person I considered a dear friend. And I didn't agree very often, but I considered him a dear friend. And Bob Olenbrook said the pendulum swings. And when the pendulum swings, nothing gets accomplished because whatever gets built here is knocked down here.
Yeah.
And we just need to concentrate on how we make it better and moving forward.
Right.
And that's, uh, with, and if, having brought up Bob's name, if you are a friend of his, reach out to him on Facebook. He's gone through some bad times here lately. I think he lost his mom and his dad and uh, does, uh, so if you say a prayer for, for he and his family, I sure would appreciate it, but Ms. Booker, if you mind if I make a motion?
Yes.
Be, be, really, really quick before we go.
Okay.
So the board knows what I changed here. And I think everything's all good to go. So on the resolution, I changed the tax rates here. So we're eighty-four, four, eighty-four, four, eighty-four, four, and then four-ten. I made some adjustments to, to the revenues because we, because we cut B U S contingency by thirteen, three eighty-five. And so I cut the corresponding revenues there too. So, so all the changes are made. So I think from, from making a motion on the budget, tax rate and the C I P, I think.
That number correct?
Which one?
The one oh four, one eighty-six.
Yes, thank you. That, that.
Was all over that.
Yep, I, I made that.
Good idea. Well, I'm gonna leave.
But.
It's gonna go downhill from here.
Well, yeah, so this is the change resolution, the items in the yellow and then.
So the, the motion and then the change that comes later.
You, you, you don't have to because the change is done. I made the change. You don't.
Okay.
Again, you're adopting the resolution, the document that I just updated.
Alright.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the Board of Supervisors to adopt the resolution entitled, adoption of the F Y twenty-four operations budget, set the tax rates and appropriate funds.
And maybe what I add with the changes.
With the changes so made.
Alright, do we have a second?
So, in this, it's.
We have it.
So we're just making the motion that we're gonna set it. We're not, it's, it's not, that doesn't.
No, set, be set the tax rates means there's a budget, the, the rates are set and, and all this means it's done.
I got you, I got you.
Right. Alright, I'm going for a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Sheridan and a second by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor? Those opposed?
Aye.
I don't know what to do, but I, I guess I'll say no.
Chair votes aye. So we have three, three ayes and two noes. Okay, alright, next.
The C I P up, since the board didn't make any changes to that, C I P is what the C I P is.
Any discussion about that?
Y'all have any?
I sure would like to see the middle school track be on that.
I would too.
I don't know how many more times I can say that one.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay.
I move the Board of Supervisors to adopt the resolution entitled, adoption of the F Y twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-eight capital improvements plan.
Alright, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, motion by Mr. Brian, second by Mrs. Sheridan, all in favor? Anyone opposed? I votes, I mean, I vote. Chair votes aye. Okay, next, we have a waiver to administer an existing split precinct for elections in twenty twenty-three and future years.
This is what we have to do, Ms. Ms. Eric.
I, I changed a little bit. Um, I, I, I think we did this last year when we had to call the special meeting in August. Um, just to remind um, the board and anybody watching, the state does require localities to ask for a waiver to administer an existing split precinct. This, this split precinct um, happened as a result of redistricting, though not, we didn't do this. Um, the state did this. Um, this is the same waiver that we asked for last year. Uh, the only thing that I wanted to bring up differently is, um, I, I think we had said before, we weren't really sure why they had done this. And it was uh, brought to my attention again today that, I'm gonna see if I can find it here really quickly. In its determination, the special masters actually had a, an addendum to their plan that specifically says, we allowed an additional county split to keep the city of Scottsville intact for both the House of Delegates and Senate. So it was a very specific thing that they did. We kind of wondered if it was an accident, but it was. So it was a very specific thing that they did, we kind of wondered if it was an accident, but it wasn't. Uh, so this, uh, the only other difference, uh, this year, what is being asked for will allow. The waiver to exist for years to come, we will not have to continue to come back, so this is just asking for that waiver, we send it into the state. This allows um, Mrs. Pace, um, General Registrar to submit this application. Uh, through back and forth with the state, we've got it all done the way that they want it done, and we shouldn't have to do this again for a while, so.
Good, that's good.
And Chair, let me make one comment about this. What happened here? And that is. I don't know how it happened, but I do know that Scottsville is not a city. And the Special Masters report referred to keeping the city of Scottsville in Alamo County. So it's, it's the mistake of the, of the Special Masters that caused this, it was, had nothing to do with what you did or what your staff did. And I think this is a perfect illustration of when you have these wonderful grandiose ideas of how to change the redistrict process. You get this kind of thing happen, and it shouldn't happen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Payne. All right. Any other questions, comments? We have an emo, we have a motion on the screen, long motion.
I move the Board of Supervisors to adopt the resolution approving the request for waiver. To administer a split precinct for elections held in two thousand twenty-three. And authorizing the General Registrar to complete the procedures, including submission of requests for waiver on behalf of the board. Required to administer the Cunningham District and Precinct as a split precinct for elections held in two thousand twenty-three and thereafter. All as set forth in the resolution.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, do we have any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? All right, any opposed? Chair votes aye, that's five to zero. And the next thing, we have a board commission and committee appointment. Um, Ms. Loretta Morton moved um, to the planning committee, so her position as a. Uh, Economic Development Authority person at large. So we've scratched one name from the list.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Peggy Shanklin, um, I, I think after she, what's her? Yeah, she, she emailed in with Drew, I think after, one, she's on an existing, I think, after she saw the, the pool of applicants, I think she just.
Okay, so we have um, Austin Baker. Jeffrey Potter, Linda Stager. Robert, I tried to, I Googled that name, and I think he's here tonight, I think it's a gentleman that just, yeah. And I Googled your name tonight to try to get the right pronunciation and still messed it up. And Woody Fincham. Um. Anyone here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say I could bring up any, any.
Okay, any, well, we, we have their resumes and et cetera. Um, that we looked at. Um, do we have, so would you like to speak, sir? Would you like to come up and speak um, to us about this Economic Development Authority? At large position that you would like for us to consider, there are one, two, three, four, and five other individuals.
Thank you, first, I'm, I'm saying thank you to Mr. Seddon, my, my kids, my son and daughter, always talk about him.
All right.
You know, I don't think so, I have any special education or anything, a special qualification. I want to help county, you have my resume, if you give me a chance, that's good, if you don't, that's good too.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you.
Please tell them, please.
Yes. Anyone else would like to hear?
Mr. Potter's usually online, I don't know if he's online.
Mr. Potter, are you online?
Did not. I was on the cell phone, I did not see him.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see him.
Um, I, I looked at, um, there are seven people on the Economic E D A. And we have two from Falk Union, and they don't have to be in from each district, but we have two from Falk Union. Um, and we have two from Cunningham, one from Paramount, one from Ravanna. So we have Columbia's all the places.
Well, I mean. Mister, Mister Potter has a great resume, um.
Go to Mr.
Remember, remember, I will just say this much, the, the gentleman that came riding across on the four-wheeler. And wanted to know who I was when I went to look at my house as it was being built. It was Mr. Potter.
I, I, I. I was particularly um. Impressed by both Jeffrey Potter and Mr. Singh's.
Yes.
Resumes and um, Mr. Singh, I, I, um, we met a couple times through the Parks and Recs Board. And the things. He told me he's done, his background are just um, at a level that we don't often see in a one-stop-light county. And, but on top of that, the things he said about the way it feels to be here. Fit right into what he said in the opening public comments. Um, and. Uh, you know, sometimes we go with who we know, or um, who makes us feel a certain way. Um, I'm just, again, both to me are stellar. Uh, resumes.
Can we save it, um, Mr. Singh?
You definitely are not gonna hear me say anything bad about Mr. Singh or his family. Uh, and like I said, I think. Both are wonderful.
And then, then there's other ones that are very qualified.
Yeah, all of them, of course.
There's another, very, very qualified and long-term. Who that are resident as well, um.
When it comes to finance and numbers, that, that, I mean, those two have particularly strong. Um, yeah, financial backgrounds, and that's, I mean, E D A's all about the numbers.
So where are we? Do we have, we need some more discussion or?
Question.
We have a motion?
No. If I make it, I'm, I asked Mr. Singh to make sure he gets his in, I'd make one for Jeff if I made it. Not because I know him, because he's got tremendous resume and he is involved.
But you need to make your motion.
I think, I mean, I, I'm always a, a proponent of. Those who, you know, if they're interested in the job, come here and talk to us about it, whether, in the case of Mrs. Steiger, she gave us a letter. Uh, in the case of Mr. Singh, he's here. Um, that's just my personal feelings. If it's important for you to be on the board, then it should be important for you to acknowledge something beyond just submitting your application. Uh, that's just my.
Well, like I said, he's usually online, he does come to the board meetings, but he usually listens to everyone. Unfortunately, he's not online tonight, and I hope it's not, because we got a fire call.
Okay. Good conversation, anybody else?
You two have thoughts?
I mean, I, you know, I, I don't know, some, I mean, I know.
Tony, I meant these two.
We've already told, we always told.
Just kidding.
I'm, I'm very impressed with Mr. Potter's uh, resume. Um. Yeah, but like everybody else, there's many good people on this list.
We are blessed and burdened.
Yeah, sir.
I like them all.
I like them all, I, I like the idea of diversity, of course.
Yes.
Mr. Singh represents. Uh, uh, as, you know, a community that isn't normally represented in many of our boards, so I do, I do like that as well, too, so.
I gotta say, I, I don't pay attention to that, and I think the best person for the job has a great resume. But again, there's, there's multiple great resumes there.
Yes, it's always such a hard decision, and I don't know how we can make it any easier. In the future. Um. It has to be easier.
No, it's a blessing.
This is kind of like going to the goodness.
All right, someone, I mean, they're floating around now, who has the courage to go ahead?
No, you haven't made.
I'm saying, I like them all, I don't believe one, Potter, if you, I see, I hear two names. I hear Potter, and it's the same, and whatever.
Most of them, both of them.
I will do it.
We can't make a mistake, no matter which one of those two.
Yeah, the, can I make just one suggestion? As, as a plug for some other openings, we've got a John Board opening that we had it close, and we didn't have any applicants either, so if. Whoever doesn't get appointed to this, again, the John Board is an important board too.
Yeah, because that's the one with the. I, I will say this one. Well, anyway. Uh, I was gonna say it was already. Yeah. I move the Board of Supervisors to approve the following board commission and board committee appointment. Uh, Jeff Potter for the Economic Development Authority at Large Position. Term beginning for nineteen twenty-twenty-three to six twenty, six thirty twenty-twenty-three. So it's only for two months, if they don't do a good job, kick them off.
Um, do we have a second?
And, and we said it's Columbia that's the only one that's not represented.
The only one's not represented is Columbia.
I, I, I can go, again, very impressive resume, and it is, Columbia is not represented, I, I can second that.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Sheridan and a second, but um, Mr. Fairchild, all in favor? Aye, all right, and.
Mr. Singh, can I ask the question? Would you be interested in your John Board? Do you have time to do something like that?
And that's in Charlottesville, you have to drive, the meetings are in Charlottesville, and they are.
It's the John Board, we did not get anybody to apply for that, so we have no one, and we're looking for someone, would you consider doing something of that nature? I mean, I hate to put you on the spot for it, Mr.
Twenty-seven year, I live in the county, working anywhere, working all over the country, sometime all over the world, did not go to.
Right, and, and.
That's the way he's.
And I would, and I would like to also tell you that you will be in competition with other, other people may apply as well.
Sure.
So want you to.
Although we didn't have anybody apply.
Right. And they meet in town, in the, in the daytime, so you, you would have.
Would that be a possibility, sir? Meet during the daytime in town? Well, that's what I was going to say that, when I got ready to say something, and Mr. Potter works in Richmond. And he would not be able to attend John meetings.
Right.
And I, I thought you were retired.
Right, so we're all ready to go on to the, we don't have any presentations, consent agenda. Um, this is a long consent agenda, um, minutes of April the fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Minutes of April twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, accounts payable report for March twenty-twenty-three. Magic City Vehicle Purchase Agreement proclaiming April twenty-third to the twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three as a National Crime Rights Week. Job Description Update Communications Operations Coordinator. We had a Job Description Update Directive Communication and Technology. We had Job Description Communications Service Technician. Um, Net Motion Mobility Renewal, that's G to O. Anyone would like to pull any of those for further discussion? If not, can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So may.
Second.
Yeah, right, uh, the motion by Mr. Sheridan, second by Mr. Brian, all in favor? Aye, and Chair votes aye. Um. What is, we, and, any unfinished, is, any unfinished.
Chris, did you have anything?
I just had a new business item, but.
Okay.
I, I asked that a constituent contact me and ask. Uh, what the, regarding the science crossroads waterline. What the original budget was. Um, where we're at today on it. And what additional costs we have coming.
Okay, so would you like, do you want to put that somewhere on the agenda in the future?
It's just a question, isn't it?
Well.
Well, it should be something.
I don't know if I'm gonna be able to talk on the fly about that, I mean, I mean, so one, we took out, I mean, the county provided some initial funding, we took out some debt proceeds. A, a couple debt issuances for the project.
Why don't?
Why don't we put it?
Talking about science crossroads or Ginger River?
No, it's a science crossroads. Instead of on the fly to your point, if you can give us some sort of detailed, here's where we started, here's, yeah, what's, what's still to come.
I think, I think what started like at six million ended up around fourteen million or something like that.
Yeah, but we want to.
I don't think it's four, no, but it's.
Don't debate it now.
I think it might have been six in the very early stage.
Okay, we will, we will put it.
Nine or ten.
Eric, we'll bring it.
We'll bring it back.
And you all, stop, get off in the back, Eric. Should I use this?
Yeah.
Oh, Tony.
Swing right.
All right, did anybody else just think of the movie?
Okay.
With Lenny Wood, Right Turn Class.
Anything, uh, what about new business now?
Well, to, to Mr. Fairchild's point about planning for the future, I think we should have a look into funding the future high schools that we're gonna build.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
Yeah.
So that we don't have that, that unwanted surprise down the road.
Yeah, and we, and I think we talked about that, um, when we met with um. The superintendent and the chair, but we talked about studying and looking at what we're gonna need for the future. Let's not wait until the last minute when we have twenty-seven trailers sitting all over the county.
Yeah, the only thing we did without going too deep in the weeds on this, w- we have requested some information from the schools on kind of what their current capacity is, what their excess capacity, as I could say. And. And kind of, you know, as, as the county has some developments that are already in play, there's gonna be a point. And, you know, and it changes every year with school, there's gonna be a point where there may need to be a new school at some point to plan ahead. I don't know when that is, uh, we just had a conversation the other day of, of getting us some numbers. And getting us some, some demographics and some addresses for, so we could do like G I, G I S heat maps to see where, where the school age population is. But that's just high level right now, I mean, nothing.
The age of the schools and the maintenance that's gonna be required for that.
We already know we're looking at a big build central, where they wanna replace all the.
I don't think, and I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm half tongue in cheek, but serious as well, too, in the sense that, you know. I, i- if, I think that the debate around the high school occurred over almost a decade period. Right, it literally, you know, took that long to come to decision, and by the time that decision making happened. It also happened to be at the very peak of the construction boom, if you would, and so. Construction prices were really at their peak, whereas it'd been done a little bit earlier than the advantage was there, so, you know. We can't speak for future boards, we may or may not be around when that's there, but having sort of a strategic plan around. How do we, you know, look at funding mechanisms for the school, so that, you know, the community is not, you know, and I think your points are fair. That the community was split over that, but why should a community be split about a known need down the road?
So just to be, and, and, so I agree with planning ahead. Um, but if you remember, I said last week, again, no dog in the fight. It, it wasn't that it was built, it was the cost that it was built for, so no matter how far you planned ahead. Um. Still, if you, if you spent more on the next school than a substantial portion of the citizens felt you should. Then it, the fact that you planned ahead doesn't necessarily resolve that fact, so. Just like, just like the, the raises for the schools. You know, it could be that people didn't, it's not that they're saying they shouldn't have had a raise, it's the amount of the raise that there will be some citizens that have concern over whether it's right or wrong.
Yeah, I mean, perspective is everything, and again, I, I think I mentioned, I'll forward you the study, I'll forward it to the board. Of the southeastern cost of schools back then, because I did that research, and you'll see that it fell right immediate in there. And again, that doesn't change perception, it's just, but now new schools are, new high schools are coming in of similar size. In the hundred million dollar range, which is a, you know, mind-blowing.
Yeah, yeah, well, it all comes, the, the whole thing comes down to, it's the saying, something like, if, if you don't learn from whatever, you're destined to do it again, and.
Well, I don't.
And everybody better have.
I, I'm. Kind of taking advantage, but also saying this is something serious.
Yeah, right, all right. Um, what about um, the Central Virginia Regional Housing Partnership? Uh, Keith Smith and Ned Galloway. Um, Thomas Jefferson, and they are still asking for a time before the board to talk to them about.
Last that I, they haven't reached out to us to schedule anything, and the last that I understood is they were gonna maybe reach out after budget was done.
I was gonna say, we, we, tonight, we've now opened our schedules up.
So I'd like to just.
I know.
Pass this on to you, so that you'll be aware. Pass this on to you so that you'll be aware, um, that that will be coming.
Okay.
And, but the thing is, um, Eric, it's not a ten minute presentation.
Ma'am, we've had so many presentations come in here that won't even sniff in ten minutes.
They want a half an hour.
I'm not trying to be mean, but we've had a lot of presentations.
I think Mr. Sheridan smells a barn too, so.
Mr. Mr. Ship, you're going to put Mr. Sheridan over here close to me.
No, ma'am, I'm gonna stay over here next to him.
Kick him on the table now and then.
That I heard those turkeys a little while ago. That would've been.
Okay, anything else for new business? Anything on the horizon that we need to?
Just some updates anytime. Yeah, love, love it when Miss Schmack, I know I'm a butcher name.
Miss Schmack, Miss Jennifer. Yeah, okay.
Um, somebody brought up, so I can't think of what it was. Somebody brought up, a citizen brought up to me within the past days. And gosh, I can't think of, but about a development of some sort. And I, it wasn't residential. And
So what?
It was some, I don't remember. It had something that they said had been applied for. And I remember, uh, in talking to the citizen, I reflected back. Didn't we as a board say sometime last year that anytime any type of development has been applied for that we would be notified? And so I, I thought so. And that's what I told the citizen, but I'll get back to you. Unfortunately, I wanted to confirm that we had said that here amongst the board and I'll get back to you. I wrote it down somewhere.
Just to make sure we don't get ambushed and we talk.
Okay.
I'll get to you.
Bye. Thank you. Now we'll open the second public comments. If you please come to the lectern and give your name and address. And you have five minutes to speak to the board. Thank you.
I'm James Kelly, three sixty three Manor Boulevard, Palmyra, Virginia, two two nine six three. Um, I want to start by first thanking all the board members for the incredible length of time and investment into this budget cycle. I want to thank the majority, um, for passing this budget and for including, uh, two point two million dollars for the schools. Um, we will work hard to, to spend it on the things that make the most difference to the community and, and to the flu cos. And so I really very much want to thank you for that. Uh, to Miss Eager, uh, I don't know if I'm allowed to address individual board members. Okay, to those who, um, found this vote particularly difficult, I completely understand that. I, uh, wish no ill on anyone regardless of how they ultimately vote, because that's the point of political discourse. And so it's a lot of money. The budget's a lot of money and it's difficult decisions. And so I just thank you, um, for your consideration. And also to, to those who didn't support the budget, it is not, um, no ill will again. And in fact, I, I hope that, um, I was not among those considered to be threatening or divisive during this process. I feel that a passionate and vocal citizenry is the health of a democracy. And so I do come to these meetings and prepare and do my best to communicate my positions, but never with malice or threat. And so I, I hope personally that, that I was not among that list. I certainly heard at least one public comment that made me shift in my chair tonight. And so I'll, I'll certainly acknowledge that, but every elected official should, should feel safe and, and not be threatened. And so, um, I'm disappointed that that's the case. And I think that we just need to work harder to communicate better and to find more appropriate ways to communicate disagreement. Um, I will always, I'm not going anywhere. I, I'm gonna run for this board again. I hope that I am successful because I feel like I'm, um, the best candidate to, to serve and to represent. And regardless of whether or not I retain my seat in the next four years, I'm not going anywhere. A period. I'm not going anywhere. And I will continue to, as we agree or disagree, look you in the eye respectfully, advocate for my position. But I don't believe that any, uh, that any of that, um, has a place in, in our community. And so, um, to anyone who sent threatening emails or communications to any of these board members, you should be ashamed for that. And so, um, I very much want to thank you for your partnership and your time and your investment in our schools. I am quite confident that we are all be the beneficiaries of that investment. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to the board, Mr. Johnson?
Perry Johnson, two twenty nine Pine Lane, Fork Union. I will not take much time. I cannot go home without saying thank you. I hope you've heard me for several years saying how much I admire this board and how well you work together and how closely you listen. And I so much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone online?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to speak.
Okay.
Yes, uh, I believe that.
Name, excuse me, name, name.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Christopher Coff. Yes, ma'am. My name is Christopher Coff. I live at nineteen Ashton Road. I have made comments earlier that, uh, were characterized, I believe, as threatening or uncomfortable. I did not make a threatening comment. I asked a pointed question of who will not fully fund the budget? And if you will not, how long you believe your constituency will tolerate you not doing this? Your elected officials and that is a privilege and not, uh, failing to execute your duties in a timely manner or in a way that does not, uh, harm the members of our community is grounds for the citizenry to have you replaced in the next election. Is we're not threatening comments. I asked you how long your inaction would be tolerated. I will not have my comments mischaracterized or misrepresented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online would like to speak to the board?
Madam Chair, I am not seeing anyone come off mute.
All right.
I'm gonna add, the spellings of our names are on the county website as are the, the end of each of our terms.
I will close the second public comments. And we will go to close meeting.
Madam Chair, I move the Savannah County Board Supervisors and Attorney for me pursuant to the provision of section two dot two dash three seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended for the purposes of discussing employee dismissal, personnel employee dismissal and county attorney position.
So I can.
All right, it has, it has been motion, excuse me, that we go into closed session by Mr. O'Brien and second by Mr. Sheridan, all in favor? All right. And care votes aye. I think that's going to post, because I don't think.
Madam Chair, I move the closed meeting to adjourn and if Savannah County Board of Supervisors can convene again in open session. Be resolved, the Board of Supervisors does hereby certify to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed or considered in the meeting.
Second.
All right, we have the motion to from Mr. O'Brien and second by Mrs. Sherrill. Mr. Fairchild?
Sorry.
All right.
Ms. Iger.
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien.
Aye.
Ms. Sharon. And the chair says aye, so we have had a closed session now.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
And I'm gonna say we're gonna cancel the special meeting for next week.
Okay. This is Sharon, Council, I mean, I've given ready to say council, may they adjourn and Mr. Fairchild, secondly all in favor? And go, okay, y'all have a nice.
I'm gonna make my contribution to lower.